Burnt off the wires. I'm nothing left.
Okay.
Are you ready?
We are on the air.
Yay.
Okay, sorry about that delay there. A call to session, the March twenty-sixth work session for the city of Tonino. Have all council present except for Commissioner Lawton, who's out of town.
Counsel.
Counsel person, what did I say? Commissioner, I'm in another, yeah, I'm in another meeting, council person. So, the first thing we have on there is review of the council agenda for tonight. You had a chance to look through it. I did want to put under presentation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have a representative here to do a presentation, so before we approve that, so I would like to add that to the agenda.
I mean, public, public, public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I could do it there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get you, one way or another.
We have guests, who are in classes.
I don't know. You guys, do you need to something, were you here for a specific thing, or just coming in to check us out, or?
Um, these two are here, actually, we're, us, the, our, the council, so they're giving them their budget department, they're one of those citizenship community that, and then I'm here for my government class.
Oh, okay.
So, do you need to sign up?
Uh, no, we're just giving them, uh, our, our.
Okay, you don't need any, you don't, we don't need to provide any proof that you're here, okay?
We'll try to come up with something very controversial, so you have something to really talk about.
You're on video, so we got you.
We got you. Okay, is there anything on the agenda that we want to add? Anybody see anything that, on there?
No.
Okay. Council priorities, again, I haven't really done the work on that. I promise I will get to it on the financial policies. I need to get, get an updated best practices from MRSC or AWC to kind of go over any changes that we need to make there, and I just have not done it, so I apologize, but I will, I will get to that. Cell tower discussion, I just wanted to bring this one up real quick. We got a proposal for some private company, you know, we have the cell tower site that we leased to Verizon. We get like, I think it's eleven hundred and, almost twelve hundred dollars a month, I think, we get from them to lease that tower site. There are companies that, I don't know how all this works exactly, but private companies that basically come in and say, hey, do you want to, we'll give you X number of dollars to lease this site, and my guess is then they sublease it to these other, you know, companies. I did look into it a little bit. They are offering like, for a lifetime, basically a lifetime, they'd give us like, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which seems, when you look at it initially, it's like, wow, you know, they'll give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cash, but if we look at getting nineteen hundred dollars a month over, over twenty years, we would come out way behind, I think, after I looked at it. At first, I was thinking, wow, that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive. If you want me to, I can look into it more, but kind of after looking at it, I think, I'll just stick with what we have and, yeah, to me, it's, but I'm willing to.
Are they trying to tie into the trunk line?
I don't know, it didn't, doesn't really say anything about what their plans are.
Sounds fishy to me.
The only reason I knew about it is because when I was on the fire commission, one of them must have some, a property that they lease out for cell tower, and he was talking about the same, he had got, gotten the same thing, yeah. This is a private citizen, I guess you can, maybe you have some property, you can lease it out for cell tower.
And make a nice piece of change offer, and that, that's what, that trunk line is. They came in and they, they told us.
Talking to the microphone, we're gonna get in trouble.
They told us at the time, this is a long time ago, that, oh, that trunk line will only be used for, I think it was Verizon, but I don't remember who it was, and I didn't believe them, and they couldn't verify, and they wanted to give us something like a hundred bucks a year. That's why we're at nineteen, because of me, and the mayor at times would, oh, 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 don't do that.
So, anyway, yeah, not hearing any other thing, I think we're better off in the long run. I mean, the short term, it's, it's like, oh, we get all this money right up front, but I think over the long term, we're better off just staying with Verizon.
Well, wherever does it have the trunk line?
It's Verizon that we're having with now, so.
Okay, so if Verizon's gonna lease out some of that trunk line, they need to optimize that pay us for status view.
Yeah.
I was here.
If, my comment on that would be, private companies don't do that just to spend a quarter million dollars. You know, what technologies are coming down the road that they're anticipating, and what are the benefits possibly to the city with a little bit of research and a little bit of waiting to see what comes? The other thing might be, if we do decide to do that, maybe we go the route of auctioning off that.
There may be others, yeah.
Correct.
Give it to the best, the person who's willing to pay the most.
And if there's a real business case for having that.
Cause that just sounds fishy to me, I'm gonna give you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for lifetime, what's lifetime, a lifetime of the city? The lifetime of the, of the cell tower?
Like you said, there must, like Jeff said, there must be more, you know, they're not just gonna give you two hundred and fifty dollars unless they think they can capture there. Yeah, so anyway, okay, I will just leave it at, we'll just stick with Verizon, and, yeah, maybe at some point, we'll look into saying, how, how do we go about looking at what other possibilities there are out there, and, you know?
Right, if they want to give a proposal, I don't think there's anything wrong with receiving that, so we have something to look at and, and research, rather than just tabling it all together.
Yeah. Discussion on the four nine council draft agenda, was there anything on anybody's mind that they wanted to move for, for the next meeting? Do you have, Jeff, you have, did you have anything you wanted to add?
One thing, I, I believe the county commissioners had their meeting yesterday, and I didn't attend it, but on their agenda was declaring not only Child Prevention Month for April, but also Community Volunteer.
I'm just, just asking, Jen just found out exactly what it is, they have volunteer one. We've already got the child abuse one on here, but maybe for next time.
Put that one on there. Okay.
Is anyone's microphones on?
Yeah.
Checking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Talking to them closer, put them closer to you.
The microphones, thank you.
Sorry.
And such a, such a proclamation may be of greater benefit than just waving a flag. It may be an opportunity for our multiple, many people, organizations in the city to actually maybe get together and, and be recognized publicly, invitation to the council, rather than just.
That would be nice to send out to some of the organizations, saying, hey, we're gonna do this, and if you can be here or send a representative, that would, that would be, would be a nice recognition for those people. Okay. Anything else for the agenda? I'm sure we'll come up with stuff between now and the next one, but, John, did you have anything in particular?
No, thank you.
Okay. Wanted to do reports?
Yeah.
Get through those.
Did we get anything from George? I don't think, I didn't get anything from him either.
I will go through these, and if people show up later, too, we'll, we'll go back, Chamber of Commerce.
No. No.
EDC.
No.
Study.
Study, that was, well, that was Friday before, huh? That was Friday, you were, you were at there, you gave the report.
All three of us were there, so, yeah.
I wasn't ready to give a report on it, though, so you wanted to do it, John?
Well, I'm not ready.
I don't remember, I didn't take, no, it's everything, everything we talked about.
Well, the study meeting's real simple, everybody gets a brag on their city a little bit, and that's what Dave was able to do, brag on Tonino.
Do you remember what the, what Lynn, Lynn's presentation was?
Yeah, it was, there's a new program out, kind of like Pokemon, the Pokemon game that was on there, where you went to all these different places, tried to collect these Pokemons. I never played it, so I don't know exactly how it worked, but they have one now that's for educational purposes, where you can go around to different cities, your city, different cities throughout the country, if you travel a lot, and you, this helps you learn about the city, because it's almost like a scavenger hunt from what, the way I understand it. And the more time, the more stuff that you get to see and log in that you, that you were at these places, the better chances of you actually winning something, and they have actual prizes that people get to win. Yelm is starting that now, it looks like study's gonna look, study is the South Thurston Economic Development Council, and initiative, and we're gonna start looking at that to, to take care, I gotta sign, to take care of all of South County. So, it could be, could be something worthwhile, yeah.
It was interesting, very interesting.
And that's one of the things that we talked about at study, never mind all different, different events and parades and all that kind of stuff that we always do, especially in the summertime.
Well, I would like to add, at the study meetings now, we are getting representation from the congressional offices. Representative Marilyn Strickland's person is there, Senator Patty Murray, Maria Perez.
There's another one.
And then there's all the county commissioners are there.
Yeah, that was impressive, we got all those representatives, yeah.
When we first, first started it, what, ten, twelve years ago, there'd be seven or eight or nine people there, and now, we have trouble finding a place.
Yeah, that place is full.
Cause it's a, it's a breakfast meeting, so it's got to be where you can have food, and, and it's, that little restaurant in Rainier was packed the other day, so.
The meeting before, we had fifty people in, so.
Was it fifty that meeting before, John?
Yeah, over the red, yeah, fifty people off the red.
Yeah, it's a bigger area, so, yeah. And we have them in different places every month. If anybody wants to come to that, it's, it's the third Friday from eight to nine thirty in the morning, and it's something that you could find on the economic development, the Thurston County ADC. Oh, and another thing we learned. Five, Friday five, from the county commissioners, and you, you go online and you sign up to get an email, and I got it. It's pretty good, yeah. You, you sign up to get an email from them every Friday, and it's called the Friday five, is it what it's called?
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Friday five, yeah.
So, they just do short synopsis of what's going on in town?
Of different things going on in the county, yeah.
Yeah, I got that also, so that was good. Okay, Arch Commission, I think they meet today, aren't they?
Well, I didn't go, because I'm not on their list to let them, I'll just get ahold of Jessica, tell her I can start coming to those two.
VCB, Experience Olympic and Beyond. The, we do have something on the agenda that they've brought up for us, so we'll talk about that under the, South Thurston Fire.
Uh, no, that's second Thursday of the month.
Jeff, I did, in fact, go to the last fire commissioners' meeting.
Oh, did you? Good.
I had an interest in the, the plans to relocate the fire station and, and how that might be progressing, and not a whole lot of news to report on that.
Well, I'm glad you went.
Still looking, yeah, that was, that was good.
I was right in the middle of a, that splash bash, you know, we're gearing up for splash bash, and I was, I had to go to that meeting. And the second Thursday is also the Tonino Lions Club dinner party, dinner meeting, so I may not be able to go this time either, if, cause I, I brought in a new member to the Lions Club, and you, I have to be there when she's in.
Gets sworn in.
When she's sworn in, so.
Then, you know, as alternate, I'm happy to go there in your stead.
I appreciate it, thank you, that'd be great. I was gonna try to go to that, if, cause the meeting doesn't last very long, and I could rush up to the Lions Club dinner, but if you'll go to the fires commission meeting, that'd be great, thanks.
I did want to have some discussion, I think, I had it on my mayor's report, so, or do you want to do it now?
Sure.
Just for talking about, you know, going back to this whole property thing and finding a location for the fire department, and it really is a struggle with, you know, if you go outside the city limits, you're talking pocket gophers. The question came up, and maybe some of you that remember here, I thought at the Ag Park, when we first started talking about that, they had talked about possibly placing the fire station at the Ag Park. I, I don't know what happened with all that, at some point, at some point, it doesn't, you know, it wasn't included in, I think, the overall plans, at least now, but I did talk to them a little bit, I talked to Aslan, we had a little short meeting with Aslan, I said, hey, what's the deal with that? Is this a possibility to even, you know, it's our property, so I guess we can do with it whatever we want. He seemed to be open to having discussions about it.
Good.
And just kind of to expand a little bit, kind of the discussion was, I've had several people tell me, hey, can we do some kind of land swap, where we take back that building and use it as a, people said, can it be a community building, you know, it could be a senior thing? I, I think there's a lots, a lot of different things we could do with that building if we could have some kind of swap, so I just kind of wanted to run it by, not asking for any approval or anything, but kind of get a feel for the members on what.
How many acres do they need?
At least three.
Well, there's, what do they need and what, what do they want?
Yeah, the, I, I talked to them, you know, cause originally, they were looking at three acres, but talking to him, he said, if we can get enough, you know, where we can build the station and have enough room to get apparatus in and out of the station properly, I think it'd be less than three acres that they would need, I mean, they'd be willing to accept.
I know that lot that is for sale down here wouldn't be big enough.
Yeah, I know, unfortunately.
But that's something that, never mind.
So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know, and if there's any feedback, I would just like to kind of explore a little bit more about what the possibilities would be there.
I wasn't gonna say anything about it, because we got our hopes up of this one piece of property, so I can't give my mouth shut until we know for sure, cause the, Chief Jaffray's already talked to him before, again, and what you're hearing is basically what we're being told is that they're open for negotiations, to talk to us about it, and so we'll see what happens, and that's as far as I'm gonna go with that one.
Yeah, so anyway, I will explore more and keep you informed, I, I just wanted to make sure there was no major opposition before I started, you know, talking to him anymore about it.
Well, I think it's worth, worth talking about, and a chance to get the fire station back into our little civic center here, the center of the town, is a golden opportunity, I think.
Just besides the activities we could do there.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, if we could do a kind of swap and have that building over there, the things we could do with, with that building, that, you know, see, a, a community center for crying out loud.
And a nice thing about it is, it's all set up, they have, they have a generator over there right now.
There's a kitchen, too, isn't there?
Yeah, and a kitchen, and with the generator is actually owned, it's kind of like the state gives fire department surplus stuff, so the actual generator may have to go back, but we don't have power over there, if there's an emergency, it'd be another place we could, you know?
Yeah.
Cooling center, heat, you know, heat relief, so there, I think there, we could do some good things with that building if we can figure out a way to, to do it, so. Anyway, I will talk to him some more and work with, we actually have a meeting on the third.
Now, yeah.
About that park, so we'll, we'll bring that up more, just say, hey, what's, what are the issues there?
I've got it on my calendar.
Okay. Library, they're not here yet, museum, no, Tonino Community Service Center, nope, they're not here. Committees, Civil Service Commission, I don't think they've had any meetings. Facade Improvement Grant Review.
We are going to have, I'm gonna try to get, put together a meeting soon, because we are adding two members, you know, we lost two people, and so, Donna moved back to Spokane, and Ken Jones moved to Lacey, so we lost two people on our committee, which leaves.
You.
Me and Sherry, Sherry and I, you know, that's it, so I need two more, and I, I would like to, I'd like to have two more besides that, if we could get, then other, then other people on the committee could go around and talk to these people, not just me.
Right.
We are, I, I think I reported at the last meeting that we, that the Masonic people have contacted me, and they want to do, they're gonna do new casings in their windows, paint them, which is necessary, and then I haven't found out yet whether or not that gold, the old hotel over there, can be separate from the other two buildings, because Whitewood Cider did this building, they're the ones in the plant, so it would be, well, she wanted to know if it could be separate from the feed store, cause what, right now, their plan is to, first of all, fix up that parking lot, and do something with it, it's such a mess that they want to get that done first before they.
So, do the people that own the feed store own that?
Yeah, they own that, this whole, this whole part of the block, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that would be nice to get that.
She's got a.
Do something with that?
Yeah, I'd love it, I would love for them to, she wants to lease out the old hotel, and that would really be something.
Yeah, that would be very nice.
That's my report.
Okay, Finance Committee, we haven't met, there's no updates for what's going with the review, so there's not really anything to report on that one yet. Planning Commission.
Do we hear anything about the comprehensive, I know that they've got the extension to the end of the year, but.
Yeah, they haven't actually, their last meeting was, I'm trying to think now, what they had on their agenda, they had a presentation on, they did a presentation, I wasn't there for it, they did a presentation on housing.
I was gonna watch it, too, and I didn't.
I did, I did get to go, and our city planner is looking at areas that we may need to expand our UGA into, and some of the ideas were out towards Yelm, and the thought was that's a long way away from the service of sewer and water services and the other side of the creek, and that's one of first ones, all that, and, and maybe out towards Miami Anchors, or hidden west in that direction, which is at least close to the sewer plant and the other resources for that, so, and that was not included in the presentation, so the planning commissioner, Planning Commission sent the planning folks back to evaluate that and, and update the presentation. Also during that meeting, we, we, they discussed, you know, I was in the audience, how beneficial it is for city council to just show up there and kind of audit their meeting, and they also audit, offered to have one of their commissioners, Adam, once a month to, to join us here, he can give the report and also report back to the commission, issues that are happening with the, with the council.
I think it's especially critical while we're doing this comprehensive plan, they, instead of getting everything at once and trying to go through it, it'd be nice if, kind of step by step, as they went through a section that they came and reported, so we're not kind of just overwhelmed with this issue.
Maybe once a month is a good idea, if they, if they would do that, that would be great.
I think so, too.
As far as the UGA expansion, we were, we had to pull back quite some time ago, because all the areas that way are part of our UGA, but because we couldn't provide facilities for them, we had to pull that back, so if we can't provide facilities, we're not gonna be able to expand out there, the same with that way and that way.
There's complications everywhere you go.
Yeah, so, so if the complications have not been resolved to the state's satisfaction, it's, so it might be throwing money, good money after bad.
Well, haven't we, don't we have facilities out to the west now because of the Ag Park?
Uh, to point.
And that, and that new development where, you know, Wayne lives, that, out in that area?
To, to point the problem with it, is that we, we've gotta meet the, meet the state's requirements.
Yeah.
To actually go out there, cause we were supposed to come under, underneath the road so that we could, I don't know if we ever did, but we never really expanded out, and if we don't expand out.
Sure we did.
We can't do anything.
Yeah, there, there is a point that the, the planning commission is more than just counting numbers of units we can fit into our, our city, it's also, what about the sewer and the water and the power and all the resources to support that, and I, I haven't heard much on that yet, it still seems to be pretty much focused, at least publicing what I've heard on just unit counts.
Okay.
Well, I think that's part of the, we have to kind of plan for so many additional units over the next twenty, or space, so.
Right.
It's a difficult issue, you would think it seemed like it would be pretty simple, just, you know, annex some land, but it's, when you start looking at all the things you need to do, it's, it gets very complicated, and, yeah, but I do know they're kind of looking at how can we expand housing by use different zoning in, within the city, or, you know, making sometimes more units available on smaller lots, or, you know, additional units on lots that we have already in the city, but.
And they're looking at.
That's all, yeah.
They, they were looking at, and I, I don't remember the numbers correctly, but we have something like five hundred units or so we're supposed to come up with.
Over the next twenty years or something.
Over the next twenty years, and the city, current lots, and if we go to duplexes and four-plexes, we could do three hundred or so.
And we have water for like a hundred and something additional years right now, yeah.
That is, and, and that's just for housing, the, and that's not the only use.
That's not commercial, yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
So, we've got another mandate from the state that we cannot fulfill.
Mm-hmm, and it's unfunded.
Yeah, always unfunded, they're always unfunded.
You were there, you remember Gary Locke said that, that they'd have no unfunded mandates anymore, but everybody's ignoring that.
Yeah, sure, oh, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that one?
No.
Public Safety Committee, have you guys met, anybody met?
No.
Public Works Committee.
Nope.
Nope. Some of these we may come back to later in our meeting.
Speaking of public safety, remember, did you look up information on the Burner? B-Y-R-N-A, the, the.
No, I didn't look it up, but.
I'll bring it up real quick, then, one of the things that I think we should, we could do, can you hear me over there?
Are you speaking into your microphone?
No, I'm speaking to the council.
It's so hard to look straight forward.
Yeah, it is. There's a, there's a, we'll call it a pistol, it's a non-lethal form of, of a weapon that literally anybody over eighteen can carry, you don't have to have a license for it or anything, but police departments throughout the nation are starting to use it, because it's, it uses kinetic rounds, so it's kind of like a beanbag, but it's, it's a lot more potent, and it also has pepper, pepper bullets, and you don't even have to hit the guy, they're about six foot away, and the rounds will, the, the person could be six, five feet, and they're threatening you and starting to run at you, you shoot that pepper ball, that pepper ball, and they're not going anywhere for forty-five minutes, so you can do it, take your time, and putting the cuffs on and getting arrested, the whole nine yards. It's extremely safe for the, for what's being used on, cause they're not really getting hurt, they're getting stopped, and it's very safe for our police, because with, with the taser, there's people that the taser doesn't bother, that pepper spray bothers everybody.
So, it's called, what is it called, John?
It's, it's called Burner, B-Y-R-N-A.
B-R.
They're, they're under five hundred dollars per, per weapon, so for about twenty-five, you know, two thousand five, twenty-five hundred dollars, we can equip our department with it, not counting the ammunition, but I think it's something that it's worth looking at, especially how inexpensive it is, and the police departments I've read on, they love it, because they, they don't have to worry about somebody being, what, about ten, ten feet away before you can use the, the taser on them, that doesn't always work, so it's safer for the police.
I'll mention it to the chief and let him look into it.
I'm just gonna say, yeah, mention it to the chief.
The chief knows about it, I brought it up to him once before, yeah.
I'll have him look into it more, kind of just give us an idea, did he, so does the chief give us a report?
Yep.
All right, Chief of Police, Officer Lee was promoted to Sergeant. Officer Lee is now taking on the responsibilities of School Resource Officer, as well as Sergeant. We have a current rape investigation underway with extensive leads within the city limits of Tonino. The Washington State Patrol conducted commercial vehicle enforcement and located a commercial vehicle with safety violations so extensive that it was placed out of service and could not be moved from the roadway. You may all be well aware of a very high-profile rape investigation last year that ended up with an arrest of a Tonino man. We have received new information and have reopened the investigation for possible new charges, and the Tonino Police Officer Lee and Officer McClelland will be attending the High School Career Fair tomorrow at Tonino High School.
Yay.
Yeah.
Can I, I'm just gonna make a comment on the, on one thing, because I already heard some public pushback on this Sergeant position, just so everybody's clear, this is not, in my, like in the fire service, you start out as a firefighter, you get promoted to Lieutenant, under our system, there's really no Sergeant position, it is a, when you're assigned as a Sergeant, you get a stipend, so it's not like we have, we don't have a Sergeant level position, you just get assigned it, so, when I say, when I hear promotion, I think, okay, he's gonna, he's promoted, there's really no Sergeant position, that's just a stipend you get to do some extra duties above and beyond what a regular officer would do.
And be the go-to guy when Chief is, Chief can't be.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure the public, if anybody's listening, that that is clear, because there was no testing process, the chief kind of just gets to appoint anybody, and that, somebody made mention of that, asking why, so I just want to make sure it's clear with everybody, that it's just a, something, something that the chief can appoint.
Yeah.
And Mayor, do you know what additional duties warrant Sergeant?
Well, I, I think what is valuable to me, if the chief's out of town, he is basically the backup when he's off duty, he's, he's the backup, and I think the reason we did the, just the stipend versus having a promotion is, we really don't have enough business to really have what you'd consider a full-time Sergeant, you know, if you're really in a bigger department where there is a Sergeant that really had a lot of extra duties assigned, so it's a minor, it's a hundred dollars a month, I think, he gets extra for this, and it's not like he's every day doing some additional duties, I don't think he's filling in for the chief. I don't think he's filling in for the chief, uh, when, when needed and some things like that, so.
Last time something like this happened, it was, uh, with Sergeant Anderson, then he decided to leave and become a computer analyst.
So anyway, yeah, if you could ask, uh, we can ask if there's any other, but what I heard from him is mostly just administrative stuff when he's off and there, there needs to be a backup person.
Yeah, I was curious.
Available, yeah. Uh, Public Works?
Yep, I'm just gonna stay here cause I have everybody's, if that's okay. Um, Public Works reports, security cameras are on order for the new park bathroom. As everyone knows, they were vandalized right away when they were open, so we will be putting them on the outside of the bathroom, just to clarify that.
That's good.
We're getting the ballfields ready for opening day on April thirteenth, I know that Tenino Little League has a huge event planned for down there, there's gonna be food trucks and everything, so watch for that. Um, the target for restrooms to reopen at the park is March, we will be keeping that restroom open year-round from now on, our officers have agreed to lock it up at night. Um, a pool update, we are primarily working on new plumbing for the bathrooms, these will be ADA bathrooms. New sod has been added to the lakeside as well as a sidewalk with pavers, it is stunning, I can't wait for everyone to see.
If you have a chance, it's, it's, it's pretty nice.
Um, and parts of it, you know, have to get worse before they get better, but it's progressing very quickly.
The last, when I said I wouldn't, I was gonna go see it, um, Troy said, no, it's a mess.
Yeah, give it a minute, yeah, especially with all the rain we got last week, it got a little muddy. Um, demolition work is complete on the old shelter and the cracked concrete areas, another sod area and pavers will be added to that demo area. This will create spaces for picnic tables and umbrellas, so that Lions, we had the Lions Club Shelter that they built, you know, years ago in there that had a little dock with the shade and a big tree fell on it and crushed it, so we decided to remove it, make it all cohesive, and we've ordered picnic tables, thank you to Splash Bash, and, um, we'll have umbrellas there for now. Um, the lakeside diving board and lifeguard area has also been prepped for new concrete. Pot holes are getting filled, streets are being swept, yearly maintenance is happening at the sewage treatment plant, an NVR cleanout, also a VRA sample to prepare for hauling out sludge. Park Street has preliminary plans and there is a meeting on site to review that tomorrow. So it sounds like Park Street is gonna be happening well before Oregon Trail Days, which is fantastic.
Yeah, that's really great.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for Public Works, what's next?
We'll just quickly go, uh, Code Enforcement Building Inspector will come back, oh, you got something?
Yep.
Okay.
Code Enforcement, working on camper habitations for the city of Rainier, investigation portion has been completed, now working on administrative portion notices. With spring months upon us, up on us, Rainier will be focused on yard maintenance and right-of-way maintenance. Um, Building Department, new office building to be located at Sussex and Frost is in plan review. Uh, new manufactured home located on Old Highway ninety-nine is awaiting final inspection. Nine new permit applications were received for the month of March, four issued and five in review. And Rainier will be going to training the first week of April to get his commercial mechanical certification through the ICC, wish him luck.
Great. Park Specialist, I don't know.
Yep, I have that too. I know everybody came through today. Park Report, currently working with TRPC and Bob Droll to update the comp plan, comp park plan, since it has expired and it doesn't represent what we have done in the park since twenty sixteen. We will have a public input meeting soon to supplement the park survey that we did. Signing for the Norseman property will be this Friday at one thirty here at City Hall in the council chambers, and all council members are invited to attend.
What time?
One thirty. There'll be cake.
One thirty Friday.
This Friday. Yeah, we would love you to be there, Dan.
Friday at one thirty.
One thirty Friday.
There'll be cake. Um, Jessica said that Dave and her walked up to the new property today and they have a much better idea of what it is like up there now, and it was very exciting to see what we have to work with. We have received four new applicants for lifeguard position, um, she'll be calling them tomorrow to set up interviews. We have five, maybe six returning from last year, so nine lifeguards, we are told, is not too many. Um, the Arts Wa Grant Update, the Arch Commission is meeting today to further discuss murals. A plan for lighting on the trail in the park is in the works, and we also met with the Washington DOT today to discuss options for the Creative District Highway Signs. The RCO Planning Grant, we continue to meet with Mike Marshall and Dave Britell, our architect, to work on plans for the new bathrooms, ticketing, building at the quarry pool. And a new lineup of classes and activities will go in the mail in the next water bill, so, exciting stuff.
Uh, and just, uh, something I talked to her, there's, um, with the Arts District, there's a required event that we go to that's in someplace way over.
It is actually in Chowila, if anyone's familiar, my family hunts there, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a three-day thing and we're required to attend, I think she is gonna attend, she would love somebody to.
Jessica.
Jessica.
Last year George went in honor of us, um, but yeah, it's a requirement in order to get all these grants that you attend, and it's the weekend of graduation, so she's feeling a little guilty because she's on the school board and it's really supposed to attend graduation, so.
But I think she's okay, she seemed to be, she will go.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think she would love somebody to go with her, if somebody's interested, interested in this kind of work, uh, just this company, cause it's like a six and a half hour drive.
Yeah.
And, uh, so anyway, if anybody, uh, contact Jessica, if you have an interest in arts, and, uh, yeah, she would love some company.
Well, I know the Creative District has to send somebody that, to that too, and that's what I'm thinking, maybe George might go. If it's not on, when, when is it?
It's, uh, the first or second weekend of June.
Oh, so he wouldn't be able to go.
Yeah, and there was a reason, yes, there was a reason that she was like, George can't, so.
So anyway, if anybody out there, uh, cause you know anybody that may be interested, have them contact her to see if, uh, they want to go with her or.
They don't go.
Dan? Uh, City Attorney, you have something from him too?
No, I know, right?
Clark Treasure, you're back on.
Yes, my report's gonna be junk now, no, um, okay. So I've been working a lot of time, uh, woo, I just got dizzy, on the SLCGP reimbursement, um, we've submitted that and we're waiting on that. Um, the PD is now officially connected to our upgraded system, they're online, they're on the city server, a couple bumps in the road, but we're making it through. Um, we have that pool meeting with the CDBG, they came and walked through and they love the progress, and they are gonna hopefully attend our ribbon cutting on June twenty-second. Um, we attended an egg park tour with Patty Murray's camp as well as Marilyn Strickland's. Um, there's great progress happening there, there's asphalt in, it's an actual parking lot, there's concrete walls, um, so, you know, more to come on that after next week's meeting. I also wanted to remind everybody about the AWC, um, Elected Officials Connector Meeting on April twenty-fourth at the Ribby. It's a free event, I sent you all the email to register if you would like to.
Where is?
Redwood, Jacks, half a bike.
I'm not going on that.
Yeah, it's right off the highway there. Yeah, we're by.
Yeah, I know where it is, I'm not gonna make a mistake.
Okay, uh, Jen talked about some of the things, we'll do a mayor's report and then maybe take a little break before we start our regular meeting. Uh, I did want, attend a meeting, uh, online meeting with ecology, uh, concerning our flood insurance, I don't know if everybody's aware, we lost the ability for people to sign up for a federal flood insurance program because we didn't, uh, I think, update our, uh, ordinance on it, and, uh, so people can't get flood insurance, we don't have a lot of places that flood in the city, but people did have it and lost it because. So we have to basically update our ordinance, they're gonna send us a model ordinance, we'll get that put together, get it signed, and he said, within a short time after signing that, people will be able to get back into the flood insurance program. So that'll be good, just to, people that want it can, can, uh, take advantage of that. Uh, I did go to the South County Mayor's Meeting after the study meeting, uh, and it was a very productive meeting, I think. Uh, Mayor, our Commissioner Fournier, I started to say Mayor. Uh, was there, and, uh, yes, uh, we're, I think we're really gonna have more formal meetings, uh, we've met quarterly before, but we're gonna meet for a while, like month, uh, every other month, every two months, just because we really would like to, we'll have a lot more discussion about how we can work together as the small cities in South Thurston County and, and try to, uh, just make, uh, work together more in providing services, so that, that was a real positive meeting, I thought. Uh, I worked on the grant for the, uh, Food Bank, uh, we're looking at a solar grant from Commerce for that building to help reduce the costs. I'm gonna have a call with, on the third, with the group that's designing the system, and then the grant is due on the fifth of April, so we should hear shortly on that issue. Uh, there was an issue with our, that was brought up about our court, uh, apparently, I didn't know this, that our court cannot do, uh, jury trials, uh, we can only do bench trials. So when anybody requests a jury trial, we have to basically dismiss it, cause we don't have a process or facilities to do jury trials. So the question came up, how can we?
Was that up to the city?
Uh, yeah, I think it is the city's responsibility. Uh, so what I heard was, you know, people may know that now we aren't doing jury trials and they may request it even though, you know.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't just told everybody that.
Yeah.
But hey, it's, I don't know why we want to keep it secret.
You guys swore it's a secret.
But we're, we're looking at alternatives to be able to provide jury trials. Uh, we talked about the Friday with the property purchase agreement, uh, March thirtieth, the Fire Department push-in, we talked about that. Uh, we did get the phones updated, uh, to, uh, T-Mobile, uh, it seems like everything's working and that will save us about two hundred dollars, uh, a month. So that'll be nice, it's not a ton of money, but two hundred a month is two hundred a month, so.
Four years.
Yep, we got that done. I think those were the, lots of meetings like Jen talked about with, uh, the egg park and things, but we already talked about those. Any questions about any of the stuff we talked about? Okay, you wanna do the liaisons real quick, or you wanna take a ten-minute break before we start the regular meeting?
Well, it's up to you.
If anybody needs a break, if we don't, we'll keep going.
I need to make a phone call, I just got, I gotta.
Well, let's take a break then.
I just got a call from my cousin's daughter.
We'll take a break till seven thirty then, and, uh, come back and start the regular meeting.
Fourteen-minute break.
I know, they've been there non-stop for like three days, I mean.
This must be for the, I'm thinking this last June, but I think we had a failure at one of our pumps on the.
That says it wasn't a failure.
Cause it was metal, but.
Power was applied, yeah, I don't know what the, uh, why there is damage, labor materials replaced, two hundred and eighty volt, oh.
Oh, I saw there's.
So it's like they provided half the voltage or something, or, but you, you would think under voltage went wrong.
You know, either somebody connected the wrong thing or part of the circuit failed, or who knows what.
Yeah, I don't know if Jen knows anymore about it, we can have Troy, uh, if you want to.
Oh, yes.
Have you seen that roof? I see it in the air, and now it's like smooth and it's white.
Really, I haven't noticed, I haven't driven that way in a few days. Cause it's a weird.
I don't know what it is.
Wow.
But it's just, it's white. Just smooth and interesting. It's, and I was wondering what it was, like.
Yeah.
I'll have to ask Rainier and make sure they don't find it.
Was that the place?
Throughout the state.
Yeah, I was wondering what kind of roof.
That had some kind of UGA expansion, had to pull back. Have you, uh, have done anything to satisfy?
For how long?
I know, we're looking at areas to expand, several times when I was on the planning commission, and, yeah, it's like every time I look at it.
It'll be cool, it'll be a good addition, it'll be good to have it looking good.
None of them have ever made it, I know. And I think it's, it's, yeah, I think that too. You know, like, when they put the one up there, five feet.
Yes, they'll think it's up there, that. And it, that would made it a little while. Yeah, and that was more of like a curve, it wasn't a really gem.
Was, is that one?
Yeah, it was like a spatial. I think this will be good to have an access.
And Dan Coleman was there with physical therapy. So that was again his business hours, yeah. So it's kind of.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, you know, people wanna work out that part, I think work out that part.
He can sense. He knows the city trauma, oh, I read Rainier's report.
I don't know, people, I don't know, they have that history, I don't think they, I don't think they mentioned, they don't say, well, could any of them were around when that happened, maybe they will.
It's outside my fence, the dirt, and he says, but I guess.
So I'm guessing, uh.
Because somebody will say she belongs to council, so she gets rid of her people. And then I was thinking about, someone wants me, that city property, yeah, they tore a little up, they took out a tree and then.
That's true, so we got finished up what we started, right?
So, let's shoot, some new dirt and grass, we pretend they're more shit.
Yeah.
He's talking about his house, the dirt, huh, he's from the.
Yeah.
He said, already got it, but it's too wet to distribute it, and he said, you ought to do that, put some there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably gone to the truck, so maybe you have to, for the country houses.
That's on city property.
Since they're gone, it's not like five hundred feet off, I think it's a English.
I can see if I were getting that for myself.
Right, or you could see if it was because of you parking there or something, but if it's a, if it's a cleanup because they haven't removed the face. Yeah, it's kind of our responsibility.
I don't know what's happening, it really is, see smaller than my, my lot, my house is on.
And I was like, I'll have to go back and talk to him.
Yeah.
But I can.
Yeah, he's probably just looking at it. Yeah.
Yeah, he's looking at it one way.
He's looking at the intersection once their problem's filled in too. We're like, the gas station, cause it's terrible back there.
Oh.
It's a lake.
Too hard.
Yeah, that's awful.
Yeah.
That was saying my name as many times.
It's really not.
My whole life.
Cause they're tough, you know, it's just a fine line of like, whose responsibility is it, cause part of it's our, part of it's theirs, you always just do it, but.
Because the gravel comes out on there and then it makes runs and then it makes big problems.
Yes, and it's just.
Oh, I know I have to go there all the time.
Yeah.
And there's that other guy that has that, that house on the corner, who's got that big tree in his backyard.
Yeah.
So Brian, just keep breaking off of them and fall them down and walk them down.
Oh, yeah. Did you get that tingling?
I'm worried about them walking.
Yeah.
I got some, I don't know, it's just a nerve thing, it's the same kind of thing, it goes down my thumb, it just goes down my thumb.
Yeah, one similar, like across from City Hall, it's a black, what do they call it, widow maker, right, when the branch is just like, not attached, like just hanging out.
That's a top of the tree, those things snap off like.
They do, yeah, well, anytime you see a limb fall off, because, I forget it, but.
Did you have problems?
Is the tree on city property or is it the guy's tree?
No, because it's inside his fence, the truck is actually inside his fence. By the way, go to the alley, the alley.
Okay.
You said it was high. And you did, did you get a high blood sugar?
Didn't have Rainier look at it?
I don't know whether you asked or not, but I did.
Yeah.
It's electric, I don't know, it sounds like it's where.
It just wasn't paying attention.
There's, uh, permit fees or building permit, concrete. Who's issuing that permit?
No, yeah, she turned sixteen last week, but we have.
They'll, they'll, we don't do our own. We don't do our own.
If you have your permit six months, no, I didn't know that. You can't keep your permit until you're in all the driver's licenses. So I didn't enroll her in driver's license time, it's the whole thing.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're getting there.
So, so you have to wait another month?
Yeah, we're just.
So what, so how, what happened? Did you know right away something was going on or did you not?
Yeah, most of those kids already know all that. Yeah, they're surprised she didn't know.
Yeah, she kept telling me, but I couldn't get her to say it at the time, so. Not like another extra month of learning things, it's not gonna be good.
Did you call me? Oh, um, well, about five hundred dollars off. But I'll bring all of that to the meeting tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock. I'm at, I'm at council tonight, so.
They just do it in their driver's licenses?
Okay. Four. All right. Uh-huh, bye.
That's right, somebody does it. Right, yeah, she really did. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised that they do it all at the driving school.
Yeah, I know, all in-house, it makes it a little simpler for the area, but still.
So she recognized from what you're telling me.
I just.
Yeah, it's the same, right? If I think it's a male thing.
Renew my life.
Especially people that have been involved in this stuff, no, it's okay.
Do you, because I have the enhanced driver's license, do you want one for six years at ninety-seven dollars? And I just grin at it, or twelve, it's a hundred and twenty-five, I should, I'll just do this six years.
My grandpa's turning ninety this weekend and my dad's like, you shouldn't be driving anymore, but you know, park takes away.
I know, unless it's the fire department.
But he's mid-filer, mine is full.
Depends on the person and their, and their ability, their reaction ability. My mother voluntarily said, I'm not driving anymore, she's eighty-six years old. But my hundred and one year grandpa just quit driving her car about three or four years ago. Yeah, and she used to, she was ninety-four anyway, or ninety, she could have been ninety.
That's interesting, they're so high. She's coming back down.
So she was going over and picking up my cousin's hunkie to bring her to five handed peanut. And long. So I got her up in the car. So you know, I mean, it just depends on the person, I like still driving, yeah. My cousin, we have, they've got Worldmark. And my sister and my cousin's holding and I go and make trips and we stay at the Worldmark.
Did they put you on the medicine?
That was Corinne, Corinne's daughter, because she's the one that looks, she wanted to know what my schedule's like, so I can go. She's like, turn it down, I thought it was an emergency. I said, oh my God, when you call me this time, I don't think there's something wrong, she was like, oh, sorry. Send you a list of that, I can. Yeah, I mean, that was hard, I can't go.
One minute.
I think it's because of the rock.
For June, July is really hard.
I bet you if I started doing this, you'd have all kinds of, little bruises.
So did you have a clot or did you have a, was that a laceration?
When I got home, as soon as I got out of the car, felt a bit of a pain.
Right, no, well, we never, we're not.
The three things, we're always at the pump or at the casino.
I think about it, thinking back.
And that car. You know, we don't go out late summer springs because.
Well, you wait until September.
Okay, everybody, it's time to get back to work. Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the city council for March twenty-sixth. Can you stand for the flags?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Approval of minutes.
So moved, approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded, or made the motion and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for three thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Consent calendar, let me get the, where did I do it? Consent calendar for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four through March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, consisting of payroll ETFs, EFTs in the amount of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and four cents. Claims checks number three two, two two nine through three two, two six eight in the amount of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for a grand total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. And I thought I saw some cannabis there.
Tenino Farmers Market. To my.
Tenino's Farmers Market, Tenino Market Fresh and Tenino Food Market.
Tenino Food Market.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, no executive session, presentations, we'll just let you do your presentation or under, for Child Abuse Prevention Month?
My presentation kind of comes after the proclamation.
Okay, we can do it then after we do the proclamation, okay? Public comment, does anybody want to make public comment? Come on, isn't that part of your, your attendance, you have to make some comment? Nope?
We're gonna tell on you.
Okay, second chance, no public comments.
Oh, can we please, before we move on from consent calendar, excuse Councilmember Lawton?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes, I forgot that one. Councilmember Lawton is excused, he's out of town, he informed me before the meeting, so we would add that to the consent calendar, excuse, excusing council person, Councilmember Lawton.
Oh, approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, proclamations. I present a proclamation to approve the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I will read, read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Tenino recognizes our future rest in the hands of our most vulnerable and cherished assets, our children. And whereas all children, children deserve to live in safe, stable and nurturing environments which promote their healthy growth and development. Whereas child abuse, neglect and other trauma are recognized as a serious public health problem affecting both the current and future qual- quality of life in our community. And whereas it is, it is the responsibility of our community to ensure parents, caregivers and other adults who influence the health and well-being of children have their, have the support, knowledge and concrete resources necessary to ensure all children thrive to their greatest potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships among agencies, school, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers and the business community. And whereas we, as city of Tenino residents, continue our commitment to protecting all members of our community and call upon all citizens to join together to increase public safety and prevent the further abuse and neglect of our children. Now therefore, I, Dave Waterston, Mayor of City of Tenino, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fourth as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens, Tenino citizens, communities, state agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and medical providers, educators and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. And witness thereof, I, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Tenino to be affixed at City Hall this ninth day of April in the year two thousand and twenty-four.
More approval.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month as read. Is there any discussion?
I say recognize.
The only thing, you said the ninth day of March in the year two thousand and twenty-four, it's the twenty-sixth day of March.
Oh, it must be wrong.
Does it have the wrong date on it?
Yeah, it has a wrong date.
The one I've got here says the twenty-sixth day.
It should be the twenty-sixth of March, we can, we can adjust.
We have two copies up there, are they both incorrect?
Nope, that's one, this one's correct.
So we'll let her.
We'll figure, we'll get it straightened out.
Yeah.
It should be the twenty-sixth of March this year. Okay, so there's been a motion and seconded, is there any discussion? Oh, does anybody want to, here, you can take a picture of mine and I can send it to you. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yeah, I'll send you, okay, we'd like to give.
My name is Shelley Willis.
Is the light on there, on the, you have to push the button on the bottom, the light isn't on.
The light is now on.
There you go.
Hello, everybody. My name is Shelley Willis and I'm Executive Director of a nonprofit called Family Education and Support Services. We serve about twenty thousand families every year through our offices in Thurston, Mason and Lewis County. And we're, let me get back to me, we want to thank you for prioritizing the health and well-being of children through the reading of this proclamation. The pinwheel is the national symbol of child abuse prevention and every year we plant them across Thurston County to help raise awareness and we brought some to amplify your proclamation. We want to thank you, it's been a rough couple of years and our child abuse rates are way, way too high, higher than the state average here in Thurston County, we'd like to see that go down. We thank you for taking action.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do.
Would you like me to give them to?
Yeah, you're gonna come up and, yeah. Please.
Oh.
We got three.
That's good. I think we should plant them along the side of the city.
Yeah, thank you. That's okay. Thank you so much, thanks for coming down.
Family Education and Support Services or FESS, FESS up? FESS, F-E-S-S for Family Education and Support Services. You're welcome, thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for hanging in there that whole time. Okay, no old business, new business, Study EOB Visitor Guide concept. I don't know if any of you others have heard of this. The Experience Olympian Beyond has the back cover of their visitor guide available and Jeff Bo and I brainstormed, this is from George Sharp, "An idea to promote the study communities, festivals and events and market them together." "The total cost is four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the ad and I was hoping that study communities and festivals and events could use some of their lodging tax or other funds to participate in the advertisement and tell me what tourism-focused festivals and events each community would want listed." "Based on the list you provided, we will check and, you provide, we will check and see if they can also contribute financially to the advertisement." "I am asking if Bucota, Grand Mound, Rainier, Rochester, Tenino and Yelm communities, Chambers, We Love Rainier, Bucota Improvement Club, Tenino Arts and Festivals and Events, if they can financially participate in the cost of the advertisement." "Experience Olympian Beyond will design, design the advertisement for free. With the digital version of the guide, each community and festival will have a link to their page on experienceolympia.com or their festival event site." So, he is asking if we, we wouldn't be asked to pay four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, I think he estimated was.
They'll divide it up between, it depends.
I think he was, they were thinking we would be like eight hundred dollars if I remember when, he was, something like that, so.
I think it's a good idea, so if we're looking for a motion for approval, I say yes.
So it's not four thousand per?
No.
No, it's for the whole ad.
It's total for all these organizations, so.
And, and they're going to write the ad?
They're gonna, they said they had for free provide the.
Okay.
But certainly we get the input, what we want to have.
Would we get, would, would we get any kind of final approval on what it's gonna look like?
I would hope so.
And I'm speaking from experience with them, so that's why I'm asking.
And I would say to that, when I met with them, they, they realize that they've kind of been some neglect, a feeling of neglect from South Thurston County and they're really making an effort to, she told me they were making an effort to do things a little different.
To write that?
Yeah, but I would hope we would have, you know, with some kind of final, I think it's just more of a list of events by jurisdiction and with links to there. But I hope we'd have a final design that we could make sure we were, I could make sure that happens when we talk to them, if, if we're interested in doing this.
Well, I think we should do it, I don't, that's, but I, I think that we should, we should have.
With stipulations.
Yes, with stipulations.
Just to make sure that we have, we get to look at the design before it's finalized, right?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else that you would like to, me to talk to them about? So you sec, did you second that motion, Linda?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion besides making sure we get to see the design before it's completed?
Are we assigning someone to provide input to the designers for what we'd like to have on the cover?
I can, we can talk to, to George about it.
George, yeah, I think.
And Jeff Bo, we can talk to him about it too.
Do we have someone at the city who could, who would know what we're trying to promote here?
Yeah, Jessica.
Jessica.
Well, Jessica, work on it, because she's, yeah, kinda. Any other questions?
No.
Comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve participating in the Experience in Olympia Beyond and Beyond Design. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Oops. You don't want to take any more pictures?
No pictures.
Okay, last one for new business, Engineering Park Services Agreement. The engineer, we have an agreement to enter into an agreement with our engineer to provide a project for park design services which includes archaeological, archaeological inspections, investigation, which is required when we do anything in the park, and we now are required to do these archaeological inspections.
Do anything anywhere, we had to do that for the, this, that's a library, that's a tree door there.
In the past, just so you know, it's been, we've contacted the tribes and they say we don't have any issues and it's been pretty simple, but it sounds like, for some reason, talking to them, that we may need to do more, more than just call them up and say, hey, you have any issues, but.
Well, isn't this just a renewal of the existing contract that we have with them?
This falls under that grant we have for the architecture.
Okay, okay.
Do you want me? Yeah, so do you want me to explain what, what services is, do you want to hear? Basically, it's that extended design and. Basically, it's that extended, designed and extend three hundred to four hundred feet of six-inch water main from Park Street to the pool area, including a fire hydrant. Design the building that we talked about, the new restroom facility, design and improve handicap access to the pool, and if the budget allows, client and engineer will determine what other design features can be included. So the project is authorized up to ninety thousand dollars to perform this work, and so that's basically what this is for, and this is through a grant that we have, the money's for this.
No approval.
If I may, just a quick note, in speaking with the Public Works folks, I think they mentioned something about this new bathroom that we're building, not just a pool bathroom, but a trailhead bathroom for the future.
Yeah.
This is the one they talked about, where there's an outside exit and a pool entrance.
And this just covers the architectures, because we have to have the architecture done before we can apply for funding to get the bathroom, so all the grants kind of fall hand in hand.
So this is just a replacement for them?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Not a new ninety thousand dollar cost to the city?
No, it's not a replacement, but it's coming out of that grant. I don't remember the name of it. I want to call it the RCO, isn't it the RCO?
I can't remember either, which one is it?
Recreation, conservation, yes.
Conservation.
So the grant.
Is covering this.
Covering those costs, and why we're doing that is so we can apply for other grants, for like the bathroom facility, we have to have this, all this done before we can apply for the grants and update the park plan, that's why we're trying to get the park plan updated, because that's another requirement to, to get grants through this.
You know, the back part of the museum, when I was president, I went, I got that grant to build that, and that was one of the things that I had to do, is to jump through those hoops with the tribes. I had to get every tribe around here to sign off, say we didn't have a problem with us building right there.
Same with the pump truck and the playground, we had to do all that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Park Services Agreement. Is there any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We missed some people on reports, but nobody's shown up, so we'll go to liaisons, be that, I don't think we have solid, solid waste advisory committee, solid waste advisory board, TCOM nine-one-one. Tonino School Board.
I'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
I, due to work, I wasn't able to see the, the entire presentation, but I did catch the Superintendent Endicott's presentation about the finances, and just to forward on the information there for those who didn't attend or learn about it. The funds, the extra funds the state provided for COVID during the COVID period have expired now, and because of that, the school district has financial challenges going forward. Costs have increased, the state's not providing any additional funding for that, and so they're looking at how to cut costs and maintain the budgets, maintain a budget with the funds that they, they do have available. Turning off the lights, you know, watering, changing the watering schedule, the basic cost-cutting things. He's, he said at this time that there's no need, no need to do a reduction in force, but they will be looking at reducing headcount through attrition, as people leave, they likely not, not replace them. So just a heads up, and, and also thanks to the community for approving the school levy. Those ones are more for, are for the capital improvements, equipments and buildings and whatnot, and aren't affected by this, and aren't able to be used for the more operational shortcomings and shortcomings that they have here. So they'll be looking at it going forward, and we'll have more information, but just a heads up that our school district faces, faces challenges.
And I was, well, Jessica and I were exploring the property up there, and got on the subject, and yeah, it seems like there's, it's not only our school district, it's school districts across the state.
Everywhere, the whole state, because, and, and a lot of it is because of enrollment, you know, the COVID did, did a trick on everybody, you know, they found that it's kind of nice to stay home and go to school, huh? But, so enrollment has, has decreased. We're very, we're a good community when it comes to supporting our schools. Yelm is fighting, they're back in, in it, in the fight again, trying to get it passed in November, to see if they can.
And she mentioned the state increased per pupil funding by twenty-five dollars, which doesn't even come close to.
Doesn't do anything.
Yeah, covering their cost increase, so it's, it's just like every, it's other, every government organization is facing the same, yeah, constantly faces the same issues, so unfortunately. Anything else, school board wise, TRPC?
Already reported on that. TPV had nothing that's gonna affect us.
Okay. Nothing from the Thurston County Legislature or anything, final?
No, just that I, we didn't get anything in this session this time, so next, next year is the long session, and then there's a better chance for more negotiations on the capital budget, so we may.
Start looking at what you might want to request for the next one. I mean, we've been very fortunate as, as a community, overall, over the last few, so, yeah. Public comment period two, it's your chance again. Did we say anything that gets you all excited and want to speak out? No?
Nothing?
No questions?
You don't have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you usually have more people?
Nope. Unless there's a, unless there's a.
Four people isn't enough?
This is a, this is a big crowd, yeah.
We're just thankful you're here.
What typically happens is when there's some controversial issue that comes up, everybody, everybody's here, yeah, the day-to-day, yeah.
And people are, more, more and more people are watching it from home, since it's, you know, they can zoom in.
Have to come here, yeah.
But while you're here, would you like to take the podium and tell us a little bit about the Boy Scouts organization in Tonino, for those who don't know much about it? That works, too, that's fine.
Yeah, we heard of that place one time.
Make sure your light's on there.
Make sure the light's on and give us your name.
I think it's on.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Hi, my name's Lily Morgan, I'm an Eagle Scout from Troop nineteen-twenty in Rochester, Washington. My sister right there is a Life Scout from Troop nineteen-twenty in Rochester, Washington, and my brother is, are you what? Star Scout in Troop nine-three-seven-three from Rochester, Washington. What? Did you change it? Oh, I was close.
What about the other person?
Audrey is my friend, she graduated last year, and she's here for spring break, so she's having a lot, a lot of fun. I've been in Boy Scouts since two thousand and nineteen, when they opened up scouting to women, and I have had quite a wonderful experience. Joining the Boy Scouts has taken me all over the country. I've been to Alaska this past summer, I've been to camp in Tennessee, I've been to camp in Florida, and I've been to camp in New Mexico, and it's been a really great opportunity for me to grow as a leader, and I'm really, and it's definitely inspired me to give back to my community in a lot of different ways. I attended Rochester High School through the tenth grade, and so my Eagle Scout project, I built a cross-country trail at the school, which is really awesome, and now that Rochester's dropping down to one A, when Tonino Cross Country goes to Rochester to run against them, they'll get a chance to check out the trail, so that's pretty exciting. My brother runs for Rochester Cross Country, so he's really excited about it.
I ran for Old Iron Jersey.
What?
I ran for Old Iron Jersey.
New Jersey, yeah, yeah, he's not from Tonino.
We're born, we're pretty much all from, yeah, we've been in Rochester forever, but like technically Tonino, we have a Tonino address, but it's right on the border, so.
But you go to school in Rochester?
Um, kind of, I did, I transferred to Tumwater, so I'm at Tumwater right now, they're at Rochester still, so it's a little bit complicated.
It's okay, the only, only time that we're rivals is during sports, so it's okay.
That's true, that's true.
We like Rochester.
And we really like living here, even though I'm about to leave for college, but I like living here.
Where are you gonna go to college?
I committed to the Air Force Academy.
Oh, good for you.
So three months from now to the day, I start basic training.
Oh, my garage.
But yeah.
Scout helped take me there.
Scouts did help take me there.
I love it, good for you, good for you.
We're really excited to be here, and it's cool to see government in action, so.
Well, thank you for your.
Well, thank you for coming, we really are.
Thank you for your service in the Air Force, even though it's not Navy.
I almost went Navy.
You should have.
That's okay, my son was in the Air Force, it's a good organization.
Okay, any announcements? Sorry, I need to cut you off there.
That's okay, doesn't matter.
Any announcements?
No.
Well, John, you gotta have one.
Anybody who is, is interested, would like to participate in the Splash Bash, we're having a committee meeting tomorrow at five o'clock at the Sandstone.
Five o'clock to work?
I can always use more people to get auction items for me.
Remember this Saturday, Fire Department, one o'clock, we have our push, our push out for new vehicles.
Okay, unless there's anything else, we are adjourned.